Testing one, two, three, four, five.
Good evening, everybody. This is Pastor Robles City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Four thirty start up for our session today. Let's go ahead and begin with roll call. Melissa?
Councilmember Bausch is not currently present. Councilmember Beal?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory is not currently present. Councilmember Strong?
Present.
Mayor Hammond?
Here. Tonight we have closed session items. There's two items here: public employee labor negotiation and conference with legal counsel. I'll let our legal counsel, Elizabeth Hall, describe what we're going to be talking about.
Thank you. So yes, we're going into closed session on two items. The first is public employee labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The city negotiators are the city manager, Mr. Hewat; administrative services director, Ryan Cornell; and special counsel from Levert Cassidy Whitmore, Jay Johnson. Employee organizations are the International Association of Firefighters, Paseroble's Police Officers Association, Service Employees International Union, Unrepresented Part-Time Employees, and Unrepresented Management Employees. The second item we'll be discussing is conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. It is initiation of litigation. There is one case under consideration, and the city is considering legal action against the property owners of 639 Preston Road for grading and nuisance violations.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. We'll open up public comment regarding these closed session items. I see anyone in the audience? None? Anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session and return at 6:00 PM to reconvene to open session.
Good job.
Okay, everybody ready? Good. Good evening, everyone. It's the Passerobles City Council for Tuesday, October 21st, and this is our six thirty, six o'clock reconvene from closed session. We'll begin tonight with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Pro Tim Gregory, and then please stay standing for Pastor Sheen for the invocation.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Oh Lord, thank you tonight for that beautiful sunset. Father, we thank you for Mayor Hammond, Councilperson Gregory, Bosch, Strong, and Beal. Fill them, Lord, with the Spirit of wisdom and revelation and the knowledge of Christ for every decision before them tonight. Lord, bless and be with our police and emergency services personnel who bravely serve and protect us all. Give your grace to our city manager and all those who labor for the city of Passerobles that benefits us all. Supply them with all they need to manage and care for the many needs of our city. Lord, we ask your continued blessing upon Passerobles and its outlying areas. Grant that we might be a city on a hill, a light of truth and civil discourse in these challenging days we find ourselves in. And Lord, give us, the citizens of Passerobles, a thankful heart and kind words as we move into this coming holiday season. Father, we ask all of this in the glorious name of your Son, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Pat. Before we begin, I, what I wanted to do is, being as this is a new location, just to let you know, our restrooms are gonna have to be over in the main Centennial Park area to the east of us. There's no one close here at this point for restrooms, so if you have to roll that way, it's not too far. I also kinda wanna go over the fact that we're gonna be in this room here probably till April-ish, somewhere in there, Chris, so give you a little history of this room. And I didn't really know this myself either. It is the Mary Norris, Norris Family Room is what we named this many years ago. And when you walk through these doors at Centennial Park, you're not just stepping into a gym, you're stepping into a legacy. That's because Norris Gymnasium, and now the new Norris Room Council Chambers, are named after one incredible woman, Mary T. Norris. Mary was born in 1896 in Windsor, Colorado. She grew up in a time where grit and hard work and determination were just admired, they were required. She carried that spirit west with her husband Ray when they settled in Passerobles in 1951. Together, Mary and Ray invested in ranching, real estate, community projects, and while Ray passed away in 1971, Mary kept their share of the dream alive, becoming even bigger force in Passeroble civic life. Mary wasn't just about talk, she rolled up her sleeves for Passerobles, and when the Centennial Park campaign began, she stepped forward as a major manufacturer. At a Passeroble City Council meeting in May of 1987, the fundraising committee singled out Mary as the key supporter of the park. Her generosity has placed honor record alongside recognition of her late husband, Ray. At that time, city leader, leaders noted that without these gifts, likely Mary's dream of Centennial Park would not have happened. And she wasn't just a donor, she was present. You could spot her chatting with kids at the park events or sitting among neighbors and fundraisers, always with that sparkle of passo pi in her eyes. In 1989, Passerobles made it official. The city council passed a resolution naming Centennial Park Gymnasium the Norris Gymnasium, honoring Mary and Ray's contributions. Mary never sought recognition, she was just wanting to be a stronger, kinder person in Passerobles. But community made sure of her generosity would never be forgotten. When Mary turned ninety, more than a hundred friends gathered at Plymouth Hall to celebrate her, and the local paper described her as a woman And the local paper described her as a woman who had fed ranchers, cowhands, engineers, and mechanics, as well as tended the sick and young for over half a century. In other words, she was Paso Robles through and through, generous and always ready to lend a hand. Mary passed away in nineteen eighty-seven at the age of ninety-one. She was laid to rest in the Paso Robles Cemetery, but her spirit lives on in these buildings, parks, and people she touched. So next time you're in the gym or sitting at the Norris Room, remember you're part of a story that started with a remarkable woman and her love for Paso Robles. Mary Norris was more than a name. She was a pioneer, a leader, and a neighbor, and a friend to the community. Her legacy reminds us of one person's generosity can ripple across generations. So there's a little bit of history about Mary and that I didn't know. And I think that was furnished by our Historical Society, too?
It was furnished by our Community Services Department staff.
Okay, very good. Now, we'll go ahead and start with the roll call.
Councilmember Bausch?
Here.
Councilmember Beal?
Here.
Councilmember Gregory?
Here.
Councilmember Strong?
Here.
Mary Hammond?
Here. And also begin with staff introductions on my right. Melissa?
Melissa Martin, City Clerk, joined by Mary Spawnholtz, Deputy City Clerk, and Erin Lewis, IT Technician.
Warren Fraze, Community Development Director.
All that staff back there, you're gonna have to speak up, too.
Chris Huet, City Manager.
Elizabeth Hall, City Attorney.
Very good. Just wanna compliment all the staff, too, that some of you are in the room, put this room together. From what I understand, it was a pretty grody place before. And you can see it now, it looks like it's brand new again. So, all the electronics, everything that had to happen in here to transmit this across the world is all done in place by that staff, and the cleanup is just amazing. So, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Next, we'll have report from closed session. Elizabeth Hall?
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council went into closed session on two items this evening. The first was public employee labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. They were discussing the employee organizations of the International Association of Firefighters, Paso Robles Police Officer Association, Service Employees International Union, unrepresented part-time employees, and unrepresented management. There is no reportable action from that matter. The second item is conference with legal counsel regarding initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D four. There was one case under consideration, and that had to do with property located at six thirty-nine Creston Road regarding grading and nuisance violations. There was no reportable action from that matter. Additionally, there is one third item. As you're aware, there was a litigation between the San Luis Obispo Tribune, Mr. Bausch and the city. That litigation I needed to report out once all of the conditions of the settlement had been reached. That has occurred, and the case has been dismissed. So that matter has been settled.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Elizabeth. Next is, we have presentations, and I'm gonna throw in a little extra that we don't have on the agenda. And if I could have Supervisor John Pashong, along with Queen Lorraine Caliero and Marshal Gary Tucker, join with me up front, we're gonna give you a little presentation. So, John and I have both some certificates of recognition, and they're basically thanking Queen Caliero and Marshal Tucker, and that's not the band, for their service as our Pioneer Day Queen and Marshal. Our certificates of recognition read as follows. On behalf of the City of Paso Robles and the City Council, we congratulate you on being honored as the twenty twenty-five Paso Robles Pioneer Day Queen and Marshal. And we thank you for your dedication and to preserve the history, traditions, and community spirit of Paso Robles. Thank you, Lorraine.
On behalf of the County of San Luis Obispo, I'd like to present this certificate of recognition to Lorraine Caliero in recognition of being honored as the twenty twenty-five Paso Robles Pioneer Day Queen for your dedication in preserving the history, traditions, and community spirit of Paso Robles. And for those of you in the back, it's signed by all five supervisors, which, if you know anything about our board, that's a big deal. And this certificate of recognition is to Gary Tucker in recognition of being honored as the twenty twenty-five Paso Robles Pioneer Day Marshal for your dedication to preserving the history, traditions, and community spirit of Paso Robles.
Well, it was a huge honor and so much fun, and I just loved representing Paso Robles. We have a great town here. Thank you.
I wanna thank everybody. It's an honor. And thank John and John.
And we have one more presentation from my side. We have, if I could have Leo Casio, VFW President, join with me up front.
The proclamation is Veterans History and Appreciation Month, November twenty twenty-five. Whereas the people of the County of San Luis Obispo have great admiration and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who've selfishly served their country and this community in armed forces to protect and preserve the freedoms enjoyed by our citizens and all Americans. And whereas, freedom is certainly not free. Every veteran swears and oath to serve and will be willing to lay down his life, or her life, for our freedom. And whereas, every veteran has paid the price by leaving their families and communities to place themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, many citizens of our community have given the ultimate sacrifice by laying down their lives while serving in the armed services. And whereas, the contributions and sacrifices of fourteen thousand twenty-seven men and women living in San Luis Obispo County, served in the armed forces, have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens and others around the world. And whereas, California Military and Veterans Code Section thirteen sixty-five designates the full week of November as, I should say, full month. Yeah, full month of November as Veterans Appreciation. And during the Veterans History Appreciation Month, all levels of government and private citizens will become more together to honor and recognize our veterans for the great sacrifices they have made defending our freedom, and to pay deep respect for those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, John Hammond, by virtue of authority vested me as mayor, and speaking on behalf of the entire Paso Robles City Council, do hereby proclaim November twenty twenty-five to be Veterans History and Appreciation Month in the City of Paso Robles.
This is a nice plug for our Veterans Event that's coming up, November ninth. So thank you for this opportunity. It is free for all to attend. It's not just for veterans and their families. It will be at the Vets Hall. We wanted to celebrate this proclamation that day, to showcase our hall at two forty Scott Street with vendors, with tacos. There's also gonna be hot dogs. There's gonna be a cornhole competition, resources for veterans and their families, whether it's job opportunities, home loans, education, as well as things for the kiddos, beer and wine for purchase. And the ABC license was submitted, just so if anyone's asking. And I appreciate the City of Paso Robles celebrating veterans, recognizing veterans, and continue to support us in all our endeavors to support the community. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commander. Thank you, Sal. Next, we have item two on Presentations, Library and Recreational Services End of Season Report. Ann Helica, you have that for us? Or is it gonna be tag team with Linda? Yeah, two, okay.
Thank you. You'll get both of us tonight, but we're gonna start with Linda, 'cause she's gotta welcome you to the new Norris Room at Centennial Park.
Good evening. How's that sound? Is that okay? Close enough? Okay. I'm gonna make sure my little clicker's working. Oh, it is. Can I go back? Okay. Linda Flecha, Recreation Services Manager. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It is my pleasure to present the End of Season Report for Recreation Services, along with Ann Helica, fourteen for Library Services, or as I like to call it, Library and Recreation Services, Making Life Better Together. Let's jump into it. I would like to begin with welcoming you to Centennial Park, the home of Recreation Services. You may have noticed we have a large gymnasium right next door. We also have meeting rooms, a teen center, pickleball, tennis, and basketball courts, a large swimming pool, picnic areas, a demonstration garden, a playground, and a walking trail. We hope you will have an opportunity to enjoy all of this while you're out here. A highlight of our summer report is our wonderful aquatics program. We kicked off the season with swim assessments and our super summer signup day on May tenth. We offered an online registration option this year that seventy-five percent of our customers took advantage of for a new one-day high of fifty thousand dollars, four hundred and thirty dollars, in aquatics registrations in one day. We were pretty surprised. We provided one hundred and sixty-one private lessons and eight hundred and eighty-three group lessons, with a total attendance of seven thousand seven hundred and eight, and a public swim attendance of just over three thousand. We also provided teen swim lessons and diving lessons this year, and we extended private swim lessons, swim and Aqua Jam classes at the Centennial Pool through September. I always say our Thursday concerts in the park are my favorite part of summer, because it's true. In partnership with the Paso Robles Rec Foundation and J. Lor Vineyards and Wine, we hosted nine concerts with approximately twenty-one thousand attendees, and we raised over nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for recreation scholarships, providing opportunities for people of all ages and financial status the opportunity to participate in programs offered through Recreation Services. Community sponsors contributed thirty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars in support of the free concert series hosted in our iconic city park under the beautiful illuminating tree lights. It was absolutely gorgeous. Our team always enjoys hosting the Fun Zone at the annual July Fourth Celebration. Our Field Zone Games, Hula Hoops, and New Big Blocks Collection were all very popular this year. We also hosted a ribbon cutting for the reopening of Royal Oak Park, a reception for our outgoing and incoming advisory members, and three public art outreach projects at the summer concerts. We provided several special summer camps and programs, the most popular being Zookeeper Training Camp with fifty-nine participants, and Babysitting and CPR Skills Camp, full with twenty-seven participants. We have a new volunteer program at our Uptown Family Park. Volunteers planted a community garden and host monthly workshops on the fourth Saturday of each month. We scheduled two overnight tournaments at Barney Schwartz Park. Thirty-six men's and co-ed teams registered for the Paso Adult Softball Tournament held in August. Our picnic areas throughout town are popular places to gather and enjoy birthdays, family reunions, and celebrations, and we processed ninety reservations for get-togethers this summer. Youth sports participation is continuing to grow in popularity this fall. Paso Robles Youth Baseball registered over two hundred and fifty participants for their fall ball program. And Paso Robles Youth Football and Cheer and AYSO Soccer registered over one thousand participants for their twenty twenty-five seasons. The Teen Center, Open Gym, and Kids Corner programs, open to children in kindergarten through twelfth grade, are as popular as ever. And over one hundred and twenty-five youth attended the Welcome Back Party on August twenty-fifth, and we average over sixty-five participants each afternoon. That's it for me, and I'll turn it over to Ann Helica.
Thank you, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Our City Librarian, Melissa Bailey, couldn't join us tonight, so as the former City Librarian and Community Director, Community Services Director, I have the pleasure of providing the library's presentation. And I'm very excited to do that. It's been a little while since I've had that, that opportunity. It was a very busy season, and with six staff vacancies, there were certainly challenges. But thanks to the dedication of our team and the support of key partners, we ensured that our services remained strong and impactful. The Library Foundation, Friends of the Library, and the California State Library funded our summer reading program this year. The Paso Robles Joint Unified School District provided lunches at all library summer meal sites and allowed us to serve from the Culinary Academy. And Recreation Services offered space for meals, bookmobile stops, and pool access. We truly couldn't have provided such a robust, robust program this year without them, and we are very grateful. This year, we took summer reading on the road again with the help of our newest asset, the bookmobile Bibliobuse featuring Cornelius, that's Cornelius there, or like I like to call him in Spanish, Cornelio, the library's new brand ambassador. With the help of every member of the team, we provided access to meals, enrichment activities, reading materials, and library services for all ages. From June tenth to August tenth, the Paso Robles City Library hosted a variety of free programs, events, and classes and enrichment opportunities for all ages. The wide variety of opportunities included the thought-provoking Socrates Cafe, which encourages adults to explore philosophical conversations, and the Under the Sea themed preschool prom that gave kids the chance to dance freely in their coolest and shiniest outfits. Hands-on music opportunities included drumming for all ages, and a visit from the Slow Orchestra Symphony Petting Zoo, where kids had the chance to touch and play with a variety of instruments. Addressing youth food insecurity during the summer months remains a key priority. This summer, we hosted thirty-seven meal services across five locations, serving approximately one thousand seven hundred and forty-five meals. Meals for youth were funded by the Lunch at the Library grant. Unfortunately for us, the Library Foundation also funded meals for adults. That means that when kids came in with their family members, grandparent, caregiver, we didn't have to turn anyone away. All meals were prepared by the Paso Robles Joint Unified School District, and sites included the library, Oak Park Community Center, the Culinary Academy, the Municipal Pool, and Centennial Pool. Through our partnership with Recreation's Aquatics Department, grant-funded pool passes allowed free entry for a child and accompanying adult at every Friday meal service. Over the summer, three hundred passes were used, and combined with our launch and finale parties, we sponsored nine hundred and forty-one swimmers in total. Of course, the bookmobile was the star of the summer. Despite our outreach position being vacant, we made twenty-two stops and circulated one hundred and eighty-seven items during our nine-week program. The bookmobile brought books and joy to every corner of the community, from cookbooks to bedtime dinosaur tales and Spanish-language counting books. bedtime dinosaur tales and Spanish-language counting books. We kicked off and wrapped up the summer in partnership with Recreation Services, hosting the library's summer launch and finale parties at Centennial Pool. Each party saw over 200 participants and featured door prizes, food, games, and Bookmobile, and of course, swimming. Our launch party encouraged readers to sign up for the program to log their minutes in our online reading tracker, allowing them to read towards a reward, a finisher's t-shirt, and earn entries into our grand prize drawing. This year, our grand prize was a $400 gift certificate to the Cal Poly Performing Arts Center, meaning that our winner would be able to attend the symphony, a theater production, or concert of their choosing. And that was funded through the foundation as well. Over the course of the summer, over 8,000 members of our community were able to eat, engage, and enjoy all that you've seen tonight, thanks to our wonderful partners and our hard-working staff. As we move into the fall, we're thrilled to announce that our team is now fully staffed. With all six vacant positions filled, we're looking forward to a new year full of potential, possibilities, and programming. Thank you for your continued support of our Library and Recreation Services and the vital role we play in our community.
Okay, very good. Ann Helica, thank you again. A very great presentation. Any questions about Ann Helica?
Actually, this could go to either of you. You know, from what I can tell, the type of services that you're offering and that people are participating in is evolving. And I think even sometimes managing the staffing, you know, because you have like an aquatics person running that, that gave you stability. You were able to like extend out the season and serve more people. Those investments are so important. So just in a general way, how do you see programs evolving? How do you see the needs of the communities, both on the rec and the library side?
Firstly, both the Library and Recreation Services actually have strategic plans. We had received so much feedback from our community in developing those plans, which really led to the addition of some of the current positions we have, which include the full-time aquatics manager, or supervisor, our tech services librarian, our outreach librarian, and all of those positions have really allowed us to expand our programming. But really, what we are being guided by are those strategic plans. Our department really is about community engagement and making sure that we're paying attention to what the community wants and needs so that we can be responsive. So I think we'll continue to offer our core programming, but continue to evolve and be flexible so that we can best meet community needs.
Okay. Questions over here on this side? No questions? Well, thank you again for recreational and library services. You guys, all the hundreds and hundreds of hours that you guys do is amazing, and your creativity to give our Roblins all this opportunity for them to participate. Very well done.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. We move now to general public comments. This is the time that the public may address the council on items within its purview but not scheduled on tonight's agenda. Counsel or staff may briefly respond to statements or questions posed by the public. Please fill out a speaker card and information given to our city clerk. When you come up to speak, you will have three minutes. Those people wishing to speak on any item scheduled on tonight's agenda will be given the opportunity to speak when that item is being considered. So, anyone? Come on, get started. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Becky Jorgensen here from Hope's Village. I'm sorry that I'm not as happy as everyone else. I'm here to talk about homelessness. We all know about homelessness, but Hope's Village can provide a solution. Our major concern is the women in the Salinas Riverbed having babies down there. I know you've all heard the story, but I've heard it from enough people that I believe it. We've been looking at Borky Flats. We would love to be able to get a memorandum of understanding for that land. Even though it's a flood zone, we have a plan where the flood would not bother us. Hope's Village has been around for 13 years. We're a 501(c)(3) California corporation. We are an all-volunteer board, all-volunteer helpers. Everyone is in this for the very long haul. We have 15 people doing outreach on the streets, and they have been doing that since COVID. They pass out water and sleeping bags and tents and backpacks, but mostly love and hope. There's a lot of people out there that are just devastated. I mean, it's just crushing, and they're someone's sister, or mother, or brother, or aunt. And we can help. We tried to help in San Luis, and I am grateful to say that they have several housing programs going, but we still have 400 people waiting to get into Prado, 300 people waiting to get into Echo, and there's no legal place for them to go. And we all know that with the current staff in the White House, that we're not going to get money for homelessness. He's ripping it away from us. So, we have a plan, and we're asking that you put us on the agenda for further information. And I'd like to tell the gentlemen who are veterans here, if they're still here, we have a program called RVs for Veterans. We've passed on 146 vehicles, automobiles, sedans, RVs, motorhomes, and we get those veterans up off the street into a temporary tiny home of their own on wheels. The county's doing very well on housing our homeless veterans, but there's just too many. And these aren't people from out of town. They're not people of transients coming by. They're our own county residents. I have one guy who's seventh generation. Took him 40 years to get housed. So I'm asking you to look at the information we've provided and get us on the agenda so we can give you a PowerPoint presentation. This could be your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Linda George, 3126 Spring Street. That's exactly why I came out today. I spared the council this time, the long email. I came here because I'm completely frustrated. Where's the homeless director? Okay, you guys closed the last five beds to Echo. Chris has already heard this. Closed the last five beds to Echo. We're back to square one. I was very out of sorts last time I was here, and it did take me to calculate that all these fires down here are also a result. So as far as I'm concerned, and as far as what I can see, we're at square one. I haven't seen anything from the homeless director other than developing partnerships with other agencies, okay? But right now, I was standing outside, and it's sprinkling. And I want the council to remember, every time you go home and you go on your warm bed, there's people that are out there, surprisingly now, having babies. That's shocking. I think that it needs to be an urgent situation. If there are agencies that are volunteering to help us, why not? I just can't see, and I said this in the email, is I don't know how this council believes it's appropriate for our public safety, fire, and police to be risking their lives for a situation where we had a shelter originally designated for them. So, when I sit in my little tiny trailer that is half-cold because it's old, and it's 50 degrees, but I have the luxury of a heater bed or a heater pad. And I do sometimes think about all the people that are just a couple of blocks away from me, suffering. Okay? The only thing, as far as I'm concerned at this point that should matter is who's down there. Rain is kind of mean. We're talking about rescues again. So I understand there was supposed to be a 10-bed. We talked about it last time. And I was told November, but hey, it's raining today. So I hope that you guys, now that you've closed out Echo for the night-to-night stays, that you develop something immediately and urgently to help get some of these people, especially if there are babies living down there. Especially if there's babies. I mean, like she said, this is your sisters, your brothers, and these are our residents. My cousin lives in an encampment in Santa Maria. We can't get her out. But I very much understand the situation. We need to provide shelter immediately. I'm really shocked we're at square one again. I really am. Because I stood up for Echo all these years. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Carolyn Huddleston. I live in Creston, but I do most of my shopping here in Paso Robles. And I've noticed, as I drive around town, that you have a problem, that you have homeless that are loitering in front of businesses, and it makes it very uncomfortable to go into a business when people are loitering in front of it. I understand it creates a lot of problems for the business owners. And the homeless need a place to go. They're not just going to disappear. Even though the police may come in and make them move, where are they going to move to? They need a place to go. And you have a problem? We would like to help solve that problem. We would like to build a tiny house village for the homeless people so that they have a place to go. And they can help us build the village. That will give them something to do. They'll become productive citizens. Even though they may not have money to pay rent, they might not be able to do a job, but we can provide places for them to go and things to do and become productive citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Just to set the rules, we only wave our hands here in Paso Robles. Applause kind of disrupts the meeting, so please just wave your hands if you approve. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kimberly. I run Hope for Ashland Mental Health Homeless Street Outreach in Paso Robles. I am an unpaid advocate. I am here today because our most vulnerable residents are being failed by the system meant to protect them. The San Luis Obispo County, we are unique for having three homeless shelters. This is almost unheard of for a county of our size. Yet despite this, we do not have one single emergency bed in this entire county. What we are seeing is a revolving door, people cycling in and out of shelters without real help and permanent solutions. These shelters describe themselves as low barrier, meaning they will accept people struggling with addiction, mental illness, physical disabilities. But what good is low barrier entry if there's no real support once they're inside? Clients are often handed pamphlets and told to speak to services on their own. For individuals battling severe addiction, schizophrenia, dementia, or physical disabilities, this is simply impossible. These are the very people who need intensive case management and hands-on help, not a list of phone numbers. Many residents are being evicted from shelters after 90 days, but often without proper case management or any follow-up care. Case workers are overwhelmed, untrained, and unresponsive. People are being discharged to the streets without support, where their health rapidly declines, and sadly, most of them die. I know this because I see it every single day. I advocate for these people. I attend their funerals, and I personally make their crosses. We are watching our community die in riverbeds and on sidewalks while hundreds of thousands of dollars are being donated to end homelessness. Instead, what we have created is temporary respite beds, a shower, and then back to the streets with no solution. I can give you names and faces of people who have been in and out of shelters for three to four years, struggling with addiction or mental illness, and still have no disability, no support, no housing, and no progress. Meanwhile, others, often seniors and people with severe conditions, are being turned away or evicted because they are too difficult. That is the reality for families across this county, people fighting the system that is supposed to be fighting for them. We have staff in shelters with little... Is my time up?
No, that's...
Okay. We have staff in shelters with little to no mental or senior healthcare training making decisions about the lives of people with complex medical and psychiatric needs. There is no community oversight and no accountability. There's no public transparency. Policies for our shelters are outdated or unavailable, and shelters are easily making their own rules and decisions. I am here asking for action and oversight. We need trained professionals, people with experience in mental health, behavioral health, drug health, and senior care, working directly with our homeless communities. We need community oversight to hold the shelters accountable and ensure donations and funding are being effectively used. We need compassionate, hands-on case managers, not just pamphlets and phone numbers. If you want to understand the suffering, what suffering looks like, come with me and I will show you. Because I see it every single day, and the people suffering are not statistics. They are human beings, our neighbors, our parents, and our children. Anybody that's with me that is homeless, will you stand up? Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name's Aurora William. I think most of you are familiar with me. I've come up here a number of times to speak on the mental health and substance use and homelessness issues. I'm a master-level addiction counselor, so I'm speaking from a position of education and knowledge. Our community, we have people in the riverbed dying. We have babies in the riverbed being born. I can think of, as some of these women were speaking, I can think of people by name. I could think of children by name. I can think of people in the riverbed who are pregnant right now and who need help and are not getting it. And they're not getting it because we don't have emergency rooms who could provide it, or we don't have CHC with OB-GYN services. We have it because we have people who are mentally ill and don't understand how to go get help. Does anybody on this city council understand or know the word anosognosia? Anosognosia? Anybody know what that means?
No.
It means that a person with mental illness lacks insight into their disease. They have a brain disease, and one of the symptoms of that brain disease means that they cannot understand what is going on. And when we have people down in the riverbed, when we have women who are getting pregnant, we have people with schizophrenia, we have people with bipolar disorder, we have people with major depressive disorder, we have people with anxiety, we have people with addiction issues, we have people with bipolar who are using methamphetamines. People's brains take off on their own, and they lack the ability to get the help that they need. I'm going to agree with Kimberly because she is suggesting, and I think this is a brilliant suggestion, but she is suggesting that there be oversight over our shelter, and that it be oversight with people who have an education in mental health, substance abuse, case management, that we have trained professionals who are helping our shelter navigate the clients that they work with. I think something Kimberly didn't mention is there is a young man right now who's fighting for his life. He is fighting for his life because he was hit by a car after he was discharged from our homeless shelter. And he was discharged because they said that he was using drugs. I don't know that he was or not, but I know that his behavior can be indicative, one, of using, or it could be indicative of withdrawal. He was taken in as a low barrier, and to throw somebody out to the street where they could be hit by a car, end up on life support, in my opinion, is criminal. And I think that if we put better oversight over the shelter, we can save lives, not just shuffle them.
Thank you. Yeah. We need to obey the rules, people. I don't want to have to have to leave, so thank you.
Hi. My name is Bob Schor. I'm a resident, a voter here in Paso Robles. I have businesses in Paso Robles. I've grown grapes, made wine, consulted in the oil and gas business. I used to be the district engineer in charge of San Arlo, right north of here. I know this community. I've been a part of it all my life, on the way to the beach somewhere. I love this community. I have a lot of compassion for this community, and here tonight, there's a lot of people that agree with that. But we aren't handling the people of true needs. We don't train the people at Echo to learn about how to deal with mental illness. You need to be educated on how to do that. And there's no requirement in that in our advisors at Echo. There's needs for medical support, and there's a tremendous lack of coordination between all the great facilities here in this county that are available through our probation and law enforcement people. They want to make sure that those people that are mentally ill don't stop, you know, don't continue to make issues that are stupid. But when a person has mental illness, they have that also disease that they don't know what to do with it. And the medical industry interviews them and talks to them and tries to figure out what kind of pills to take. And it's not a very high-tech industry. Mental illness as a disease has been ignored for way too long. The groups that we are involved with, the previous two speakers are with Hope and Faith, the Advocates for Ashley, also the Pastoral Cares Group. the advocates for Ashley, also the Pasco Cares Group. We go down to the riverbed, to the people where they're staying. We give them food twice a week. We give them clothing. We give them dry socks. We pray for them. We give them an example of the importance of doing the right thing and how to get away from the complications that they get exposed to all the time, every night. Someone raids a camp, someone walking back from Echo at six o'clock in the evening when it's dark to their camp that's a mile away. They get accosted, they fall in, they get hurt. There's some real oversight of needs of how to better handle this situation. Can I say that one of the problems is the effluent from the water plant? That is disease effluent. Your staff measures it. It has COVID in that effluent you put in the riverbed. It has other viruses. The treating facility, all it does is filter things and throw in some chlorine, and chlorine is a cancer-causing product. That's in the riverbed, too.
Can you summarize, sir?
And I just summarize that the water effluent needs to be better controlled because we've got people with disease in their legs that their legs are potentially gonna be amputated right now. And it's getting the disease from the effluent from the water plant. And before we ship that water over into the Barney Sword soccer fields, we've gotta treat it. We've gotta take care of it. And I, again, emphasize as the other people that the training of our support staff really needs to be emphasized. They need to have better training on how to handle mental illness, how to handle medical issues, and the diseases of the riverbed.
Thank you, sir.
Please.
Great, thank you, guys.
My name is Gloria Fama. I'm a member of the Paso Robles Democratic Club. For one minute, I'm gonna speak just as myself. After hearing this very depressing news, I just wanna add, as a retired healthcare professional of 40 years, and I just wanna say, I don't know exactly what this council can do to help the situation.
Ma'am, can you address the council? Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah.
As long as we are supporting the people in the White House who choose to give tax breaks to billionaires instead of healthcare and universal healthcare for the people, and mental healthcare for the people, it's only gonna get worse. And I'm not quite sure what the solutions are, but I know as a community, we've kinda gotta get it together, or more people will die. But I really don't think the people in power right now, they don't care. But anyway, here, on behalf of the Paso Robles Dem Club, I wanted to publicly thank the Paso Robles Police Department participants, along with the slow county police officers for their friendly cooperation while keeping us, 6,000 of us, safe during our anti-fascist demonstration entitled "No Kings." In over 2,700 events, there were zero arrests among our participants.
Ma'am, this is not speaking to this item, is it?
This is what?
We're taking
Public comment.
Yeah, public comment. If you wanna shift, you're shifting to a different topic. Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you to the police departments for their cooperation and help.
Great.
And that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing none, do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments. Again, this is a very important subject for Paso Robles. I think, again, we, as a city, I think one of the first to actually hire a homeless coordinator in the county to try to help solve this situation. I mean, it's difficult, to say the least, for all of us. Anyone who has to live and work alongside some of the folks that we see, it's an important thing that we do try to help as much as we can. And that's the council's direction here, is to try to put our city resources at a point where it will do the most for our tax dollars toward this solution. Echo is one way we're doing that, but there's others that you can certainly propose to staff. We're always open for anything that people have an idea on how we can, as a city, help it better. So I encourage any of you to contact our staff. City manager Chris Huat would be the first to contact, so thank you for coming on, speaking on these items. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And we'll move on to agendas to be deferred. Mr. Huat, do we have any?
Mayor, excuse me, no items to be deferred this evening.
Okay. And next, we come to the consent calendar. And these are items on the consent calendar that are considered routine and do not normally require a separate discussion. However, any member of the council or the public that have specific questions or clarification on an item, we can address those now before the vote is taken. If a full discussion is desired by a member of the council or public, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and be considered separately and moved to the end of this discussion items, agenda. I will now ask council if they have any questions on the consent calendar and ask, or to have anything pulled, left or right? Chris, Bill?
Nothing pulled.
Anything on this side?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Pro Tim Gregory?
Yeah. So Warren, is this a question on item three for the housing constraints?
Yes.
I see the people that you've appointed, which are great. Do you have a list of who's gonna remain on the committee?
Yeah, so the Housing Constraints Committee, the council reappointed all the active members, so they all remain. We had three vacant seats, one for the Home Builders Association, one for the Paso Chamber of Commerce, and one for a local real estate professional. So you'll be appointing those three remaining vacant seats, and then we'll have a fully seated Housing Constraints Committee.
Okay. And is that list available online with the city website?
Yeah, it should be on our website. We'll double-check that.
Thank you very much.
Chris Beal?
While we're on it, can you tell me what you're thinking in terms of a timeline and a frequency of sort of how this committee's gonna be functioning moving forward?
Yeah, historically, it's kind of met on an as-needed basis. Because we've been in the process of kind of reconstituting the Housing Constraints Committee with new bylaws and new appointments, we haven't had a meeting this year. Once we get these appointments confirmed, we will have a meeting in November, and then hopefully, we'll get on to a more regular schedule moving forward.
Okay, got it. Okay, no other questions from council? I'll open it up to public. Anyone wishing to have a question or have an item pulled on consent? Seeing none, we'll bring it back then to council. There's items one through four on the consent calendar. Looking for direction and direction.
So Mayor Hammond, I'd like to move that we approve items one through four on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Gregory, second by Bausch. Discussion? Okay, we'll call for the question, Melissa.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bausch?
Aye.
Councilmember Beal?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously?
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, I think we skipped the city manager's overview. Would you like him to do that now?
Yes, if you, yeah, I'm sorry, I did miss that.
Mayor, thank you. So the items you just voted and approved on, item one was the approval of your meeting minutes from the October 7th city council meeting. Item number two is the approval of the, or the receipt of the warrant register for payments made by the city since your last city council meeting. Total payments totaled a little over $2 million. It'll cover those that exceed $100,000. There were four of those payments that exceeded $100,000. The first was a payment to Pacific Gas and Electric for the August 2026 utilities in the water fund for the amount of $352,562.83. Next payment was made to Newton Construction. This is for the public safety training tower equipment at Fire Station or just behind Fire Station 3, paid out of the capital improvement fund in the amount of $218,683.35. Next payment is made to Pacific Gas and Electric, and this is for August 2025 utilities for general funded utilities in the amount of $118,634.2. And the last is a payment to Best Best and Krieger for July attorney fees. Those come from a variety of different funding sources, including developer reimbursements in the amount of $153,126.68. Moving on, item number three was the approval of the Housing Constraints and Opportunities Committee appointments. These were for appointments specific to certain organizations, including the Home Builders Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and a local real estate professional. And then the last item on tonight's consent agenda was the approval of a final map, track number 3176-1 for recordation. This is within the Vornado Planning Areas 3 and 8. There were several items that you approved to effect this action. One that I'd like to highlight is the subdivision improvement agreement that allows for the assurance that certain improvements will be made within that track that will eventually become city assets. So with that, that concludes the overview of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Chris. Moving on, we have actually no items on the public hearings tonight. We'll move on to discussion items. First up on that is an oak tree removal permit, 25-11, request to remove oak tree number 28 in the Olson-South Chandler specific plan. And Darren Nash, do you have that item for us?
Yes, sir. Is this mic working? Yep. Darren Nash, city planner, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What's before you tonight is an oak tree removal by Olson 212. They are the master developer of the Olson-South Chandler specific plan, otherwise known as The location of this tree is in the, it's south of Laney Road and east of Sherwood Road. It's within the PG&E boundary, known as Planning Area 21. So this is what's named as Tree Number 28. The request is to remove the tree. The tree is a 38-inch diameter Valley oak. It's located on top of a knoll, again, in that Planning Area 21. Arborist Outhouse and Mead looked at this tree on behalf of the applicant, and then the city also had a contract arborist review the tree and its current condition. Both arborists have indicated that the tree is in good condition, given the grading impacts that have taken place around it, and the age of the tree and the health of the tree. So the letters and the reports provided by Outhouse and Mead indicate that the reason this tree is being requested to be removed is to allow for this area that's under the tree, around the tree, to be used for dirt, to be used in other places of the specific plan area. So the project needs 115,000 cubic yards of dirt, and within the specific plan areas, the developer is looking for areas where that dirt could be brought from, borrowed from, to take to another area. The borrow site has been identified in Planning Area 21, and this tree is sitting on top of an area that is considered a borrow site, potential borrow site by the applicant. The area within Planning Area 21 would be about 45,000 cubic yards of dirt that would help to make up the 115,000. There's other areas that I believe they plan to go within the existing specific plan. We have applicants and developers here that can better explain that. The proposal would be to remove that knoll, dropping the elevation or the hill down approximately 13 feet, and this would necessitate the removal of the tree. So this is a cross-section. The yellow oval there is representing the tree. The dash line is the current hill, the current height of that hill. The dark line going across would be the finished grade or the finished area after that hill was removed. So dropping that area down, making it flat, taking that dirt, using it somewhere else. Before you tonight is a request for an oak tree removal, but we also have to consider the reason why the tree is being removed, and the reason the tree is being requested to be removed is to gain that borrow site. The left-hand image is the, out of the specific plan, this is the proposed grading, the grading that was reviewed and shown in the specific plan as the grading areas. The red areas indicate steeper areas, where steeper slopes were gonna take place. The green areas indicate not as steep, down to flat areas. You can see the swath along the bottom corner there is the white area is that Area 21 that didn't show very much grading at all, and the tree was slated to be protected with the specific plan and with the review of the oak removals and protection plan with the specific plan. The area on the right is a conceptual grading plan out of the specific plan that showed some area around the tree to be graded, which has happened, but the tree being protected. So the project is deficient 115,000 cubic yards of dirt. The removal of the tree is needed in order to gain access to that dirt, to be able to utilize it. It's being requested to allow a significant amount of grading to occur that would change the topography, change the drainage patterns. The change in grading, drainage, topography is not consistent with the current specific plan. Therefore, an amendment to the specific plan would appropriately allow for the proposed changes, or that would be the mechanism for city staff, the planning commission, the city council, to review the proposed grading and determine if this is something that makes sense for the community, makes sense for the specific plan as part of that specific plan amendment. Once the amendment, the specific plan amendment is approved, assuming that that request for dirt removal is approved by the city, then that's a point where the tree can also be looked at in terms of being removed or not. But the council's action to remove the tree tonight still would not give the developer the ability to remove the dirt without going through a process of grading plans and things that have not been submitted yet. But we've already looked at what's being proposed and know that it's not consistent with the specific plan. So the options tonight that staff has brought before the council are to deny the removal based on the finding that the tree is considered healthy, and the need to remove the tree is based on proposed grading that is not consistent with the specific plan. The second option could be approve the resolution approving removal of the tree, but that would be contingent on the applicants going through a specific plan amendment and getting approval for the mass grading within that planning area. So it is possible for the council to allow removal of the tree, but contingent on that specific plan amendment. So we wouldn't be able to issue them a permit to remove the tree until the specific plan is amended. And then the third option is if the council decided there's other alternatives for staff to look at.
All right.
And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Darren. I'll start off on my left here, Councilmember Beal.
Thank you, that was very helpful. I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding the situation. So one, grading has already occurred that's inconsistent with the approved grading plan. What is proposed is that the grading plan eventually gets changed, and that would be inconsistent with the existing specific plan.
Yeah, there has been some grading that has occurred around the tree in that area that was part of approved grading that was part of approved grading plans by the city, and it was indicated in the specific plan as an area of some grading, pretty minor indent into that Planning Area 21. So there are some areas within Planning Area 21 that have been graded, areas for roads, things that the specific plan shows are going to be constructed. But what's needed in order to get 45,000 cubic yards is what's considered a mass grading, and Planning Area 21 has not been approved by the specific plan for a mass grading exercise.
Thank you.
Am I right? Pro Tim Gregory.
Yeah. Darren, just a couple of questions for you. So in Area PA 021, mass grading is not permitted as far as the grading plan is concerned right now, correct?
Correct.
So I just, it almost feels like the cart before the horse. It's, I'm not comfortable even voting on this because we're doing something, if we vote to take the tree out, and we don't have a grading plan to support it, it doesn't seem correct to me. So I have a real severe concern about removing a tree without a grading plan approved by the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Bausch.
Darren, can you walk us through how change to the specific plan might take place and the timeline for that, should the applicant decide to go that route?
Sure. The applicant's civil engineer would need to submit grading plans showing the proposed grading. If you look at the specific plan, there was a lot of effort that was done to try and come up with a, the maps shown, try to get an idea of what was this huge project going to end up like after all the grading was occurred. The end result was what they call a balanced site. They were going to cut and fill all within the specific area and not have to truck dirt in. So it took grading and drainage plans, it took cross-sections, it took photo simulations, things that were necessary to show the end result of what is this going to look like when the grading's occurred that's being proposed. So this is a smaller area than the whole specific plan, but we would anticipate needing the grading plans, the views of what it's going to look like when it's actually, actually after it's happened, landscaping plans, all those kind of plans that would be needed. And then that would get submitted, be reviewed by staff, and eventually go before the Planning Commission for a recommendation to the City Council or a specific plan amendment. Part of that would also be taking a look at any kind of conflicts with the environmental, so making sure it was consistent with the existing EIR, Environmental Impact Report for, you know, dust, visual from off-site, visual from onsite, those kind of things, and then oak tree impacts as well.
So realistic to suggest that the existing EIR could be modified, not necessarily a new EIR would have to take place?
Yes, we would look to utilize the existing EIR as much as possible if there needed to be an addendum, or, you know, who knows? It's possible that this could all be done under the current environmental document. However, we, staff has not been presented plans to show, here's the grading that is being proposed. I haven't had a chance to do that. It's been a request to remove the tree, and then some-
Well, assuming the applicant wants to go through that, is that a six-month process, a year-long process, two years? Give me your best estimate. I promise I won't hold you to it.
Yeah, but they will, right? You know, once we get a complete application, we have everything to move forward, I would say that a specific plan amendment, getting it to, you know, Planning Commission and Council, you know, I would say you're looking at probably around six to eight months.
Okay. Thank you.
To get there.
Councilmember Strong.
Thank you. That looks like it's in the PG&E easement for high-tension wires, is it not?
Correct.
And the grading that is proposed would encroach into that easement?
That's what we understand.
All right. And does it, does it actually pose a danger to any of those high-tension wire brackets that are holding those tension wires up?
Staff hasn't seen the plans, but it's my understanding, talking with the developers, that they've worked with PG&E, they've talked to them about the grading, and the grading is an area that wouldn't affect-
Have we seen anything from PG&E on this?
No, and that's one of the reasons why we're saying we need them to submit and go through a specific plan amendment, go through a process where they can show us that PG&E is good with it, that they're not going to affect the tower areas, that it is something that's going to work.
Okay. And finally, how many units are proposed that could be built on that property as it stands now, and how many more would be built if you did the grading?
I don't think it's going to affect the number of units. There's no units within the PG&E area.
Right.
So the grading isn't going to affect units. I think the question is-
And what's the purpose?
To keep from importing-
And what's the purpose?
45,000 yards of dirt.
Yeah, importing the dirt.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. That's, that was my question too, Darren. Again, it sounds like the effort here is to save costs and use balanced soils on the property instead of importing to do what they need to do.
Sure. It's a matter of needing more dirt to complete the grading, to get the, you know, the roads, the homes, the streets, the drainage, all of that to be, to continue. Obviously, there's been some amazing development out in that specific plan area, and they're come marching along to complete these planning areas and using the dirt to get where they have. What I'm understanding has caused them to not have enough to keep those going.
Was this kind of like an oversight on the engineers originally when they planned the development, that they thought it was balanced, but now it's not ending up that way, or?
I don't know the details, but I know the applicants are here, and I believe the applicant's engineer is also available for questions.
Okay. Yeah. Any more questions for Darren? Because I'd like to get the applicant up if we can. Okay? Can we have the applicant come forward, and does he wish to speak?
Welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to let us speak tonight on the removal of Oak Tree 28. My name is Ashley. I am the project manager for Olson Ranch. So our goal this evening is simple. It's to provide transparency, evidence, and context to why the removal of this tree is both necessary and consistent with the approved Olson-Chandler specific plan. Some of the things that were said tonight were a little incorrect, so hopefully my team can clarify that for you as well. Oak Tree 28 has been carefully evaluated by our arborists and have concluded that the tree is in decline and possesses an increasing safety risk as grading occurs around that surrounding area. This is not a healthy, thriving oak. It is a stressed tree, showing signs of dieback and structural integrity. The intent is not to remove trees without cause. In fact, Olson has preserved and protected many trees throughout this project and invested heavily in a long-term mitigation plan and replanting. However, in this case, this particular tree and the location and condition has made preserving impractical and unsafe under the preceding grading. We are asking for approval for removing of the Oak Tree 28. We're not asking for grading approval of anything of the kind. We are only asking for the removal of Oak Tree 28 at this time. I'll hand it over to Lyndy from Althouse and Meade to give a little bit more on the health of the tree. We also have Kelly from Rick Engineering that will present a few slides, and Bianca from BEK. So thank you. Hold it. Is this Lyndy on? She was going to do the next slide. Lyndy?
Do we have an online?
Oh, there she is. Oh, she's in person. She's in the house. She's magical. We just never know. All right, I'll let her present the next two slides.
I didn't know where my slides were. I'm Lyndy Althouse from Althouse and Meade. Thank you very much. I've been out in the field all day. Nice to see you, Mayor and councilmembers, very much. This tree is a lovely tree. I don't deny it, and these are very hard decisions to make. And the tree is stressed, and I think the city's consulting arborist also confirmed that. And I think what I can see out there with that tree, so right now we have a tree that's isolated from its historic environment because we have taken some dirt around. We knew that that tree was going to be at or over 50% impacted, so the mitigation calculation confirmed that tree was going to be impacted, and so they've already started the planting process to replace trees that were impacted to that scale. So we have a lovely old tree that's sitting on a hill where there's lots of ground squirrel activity, and there's not the normal hydrology that would normally serve that area because we've taken it away. It was a risk. So yes, we could keep that tree where it is, and it will continue to decline. It's a decision. It could last for 50 years. It could last for 20. I don't know. Tree 22 that's just down the hill from this, it is on Shea Homes, like preferred site, just threw a huge branch last month. It was really sad. And these trees, when they get old, they tend to do that, throw branches. It's not technically a hazard tree because there's no path underneath it, there's no building, so we can't call it a hazard tree, but it's a tree that stands to decline more rapidly than it would have if it had been set in its historic setting. So I can't condone the tree, but I can say this is the current situation. And so what I told the team is I said, look, if you've got to remove this tree, you've got to give back something that's really beautiful, and it has to replace some of the values and functions of this landscape that we've lost. And that means more native trees, and it means more native understory. Things were the butterflies for the birds, and I think that's what they're trying to do. So with that, I'll turn it over to-
And one more slide. There.
That's me. This is Kelly Drew with Rick Engineering. Thanks, Mayor and councilmembers. Sorry I can't be there in person. My two dogs would be very sad, and they couldn't come to the meeting. So I am joining you via Zoom here. Wanted to just talk through and hopefully answer a couple of questions you had on the grading. On the left-hand side of the screen is the same heat map, we call it a heat map, depicting the grading that was shown in the specific plan. So red, deeper red versus lighter red, that's more cut that we're doing on the site, and the green is more fill, and the levels of green darker is more fill. So we're adding dirt in those green areas. So there's a very slight highlight in yellow, kind of where that dark green, dark red pokes out into the PG&E easement. So there's a large fill slope at the back of those homes that back up to the PG&E easement. So a large manufactured slope there with the tree sitting on top. In the middle is the next document that was prepared in the project timeline, which is the vesting tentative tract map, which shows about 60,000 square feet of grading happening in the PG&E easement. The intent of this is, yes, you can see a little notch out where that tree was to remain, but there's a significant amount of grading happening to the south and the east of that I was not the one who prepared the tentative map, so I'm just kind of showing you the chronology here. We still have, you know, the bands, the roadway corridors that do cut through the PG&E easement. So the PG&E easement clearly was slated for some sort of grading, you know, to the degree, I guess, is the debate here. On the right-hand side of the page is our proposed grading plan for the removal of the tree, the little red X in that circle, and then the resultant of the grading that would happen in that PG&E easement. The total square footage on this grading is about 70,000 square feet of graded footprint. A lot of it has to do, there's a big embankment up to the new alignment of Hanson, which happens in all three of these diagrams. So just wanted to point out kind of the chronology. Yes, we see the specific plan. We move into, the project timeline moves into the vesting tract map, which was approved with this level of grading impact in PA 21, and then into what we're proposing now as a graded final condition with tree removed and roughly the same amount of grading as allowed in the entitlements. Flip the slide. One thing, before you flip, the one thing I wanted to point out, I think someone had a question about where are the high-tension lines? On the far right-hand snip there, just south of the word Highlands, there's a diagonal line that's pretty thin there, and that shows where the high-tension line is. So it's way south in that big swath. This is my math problem. This shows you, you know, what the anticipated earthwork was at the time of the preparation of the tentative maps for the project. Specific plan sort of indicates a balanced site. This tentative map earthwork summary indicates actually an export site. This tentative map included an estimate for shrinkage of up to 15%. So you cut the dirt, the dirt has voids. When you go to place the dirt, you compact the dirt, and you lose those voids, and so you're effectively losing dirt when you go recompact it to build. So we call that a loss, a shrinkage loss in that dirt number. So we could have a big pile, you know, if we graded this whole thing, have a big pile of 150,000 cubic yards. We would shrink that, so when we go to place it, we actually lose the volume when we replace that dirt. So the difference between the estimated 15% shrinkage and what we actually saw in the field with soils reports and contractor data was up to 20% shrinkage. So we've got an additional 5% that we're shrinking this big pile of dirt. Throughout the life of a project, things change. So these next three bullets are indicating just some kind of bigger picture things that have gone on, on the project, that have changed the nature of the earthwork summary. So using dirt from the site, and again, we've got, you know, potentially 154,000 yards to use to do things. One of them is we rectified an issue that we saw in the original tentative in Planning Area 11, and so we needed to bring in some dirt there, raising up the streets and the home lots for the homes, so that we could provide gravity utility clearances and cover over those utilities. In Planning Area 13, we actually had to bring in and rekind of configure the grading concept there to achieve the site layout and the yield that was provided in the tentative map. And then as things would have it, we've got just some grading and control point differences that have gone on throughout the project life through the grading, the mass grading phases, and that resulted in a loss of about 100,000 yards due to some control points and inconsistency in use of the control points that were done on the project. So all those losses coming out of your pile of 154,000 cubic yards resulting in, you know, the project now flipping and needing dirt. So originally, we were thinking we were going to have dirt coming out of our ears, and now we need actually dirt, we need to find dirt. We've lost dirt throughout the life of the project. So in order to make up for that need, we're proposing this Tree 28 removal to gain us about 44,000, 45,000 cubic yards, and then we're actually getting some kind of dribs and drabs of what we call spoils coming from the home building process. So when they dig their foundations, there's a little bit of dirt there. They dig out their driveways and put in their pavers or their concrete in the driveways, there's a little bit of dirt comes out of there. There's spoils that go on when we put utilities in the street. There's dirt that come out of those trenches. And so we're just having that spoiled dirt, you know, trucked down, and we can reuse that to complete the project. So through the math problem, what we're showing is, you know, we're going to end up with, hopefully, removing this tree, regrading in PA 21, we're approaching back to that desired balanced site condition from an earthwork perspective, which is always the goal. We don't want to be trucking in dirt, we don't want to be hauling off dirt, you know, specifically importing dirt. We're now talking about additional dump trucks on the road going from wherever we're finding this dirt. this dirt into the project. We've got road degradation, you know, greenhouse gas, and all those types of things are going on now external to the project, so. And so what we're finding is that the graded footprint, you know, the intent to grade in the PG&E easement was there, maybe not in the specific plan, but as we then entitled the project, the tentative map clearly allowed for grading in that easement. And so we're wanting to present the fact that this, from our perspective, we're talking about 1.1 million yards of earthwork that we're doing. This 44,000 that we're asking for is about, you know, 3% of that total. So in our minds, it's considered a minor grading change. We're not changing the nature. We're not changing the drainage patterns. The way that our profession works is we can't change the drainage patterns. That's a historic law that we just can't, we can't alter those without pretty big discussions with cities. So the intent here is to not change drainage patterns. We are keeping those same drainage patterns. Things are draining where they had historically been draining. So we've been very careful to preserve that. And then we are looking for just a consistency finding, like we have an entitlement that provides for regrading in that easement to the depth and the level of cut that we want to get out of easement could be up for debate, but square footage says we're right in the ballpark of what was contemplated, so. So again, we're looking to eliminate the need to bring dirt in from off-site, so we're looking to use the dirt we have on-site to create that balanced earthwork condition that was contemplated in the specific plan. And due to the nature of, you know, the economy, the course of construction, you know, things we've encountered along the way, field conditions, et cetera, it's throwing us a little bit out of balance. So this tree 28 being, you know, in moderate health, you know, five out of 10, all by itself with a arborist report that shows that, you know, it could be dead in two years, it could be dead in 20 years, nobody really knows, but the sighting of it is a little bit challenging. So this is really the last piece of the project to gain dirt, so that's why they ask now. So these items are showing you just from the specific plan where that tree sits, what the grading was contemplated there. There's a few little parallel lines next to the tree. That was the contemplated grading. Flip to the next one. So this was the Phase 1 mass grading that was approved. So from the specific plan, we go to the tentative map process. After the tentative map process, we actually get into construction documents and drawings that the city engineering department reviews and approves. This was the borrow area, this orange dashed line, this was the borrow area and the limits of grading within that easement that was approved with the Phase 1 mass grading. So again, there was grading contemplated even up the staff level in the mass grading plan for Phase 1. In Phase 2, we're staying out of the easement. This is the currently approved Phase 2 mass grading plan that the city has approved. Again, you can see the large manufactured slope that is created in the back of those lots that back up to this easement. So with this removal and kind of the massaging of the grading down in the area of the tree, we lose that big manufactured slope that, you know, could look ugly if it was in your backyard. We'll lose that, and those homes will be able to now view out across the easement and down to the east toward Hanson. And then this is the proposed, the Phase 3 grading, which will come up to that large manufactured slope that now will be removed when we drop this area down. And so this gray area shows the limits of grading for that proposed Phase 3 grading situation, and then that tree would be removed there. Here's just a couple of cross-sections, you know, existing grade up top in the dashed, and then the proposed grade underneath. So you can see the Lot 306 has a large slope in the backyard, fence at the top of their slope, and then the tree where it sits there. And then in the proposed condition, obviously, the tree would be gone, and the Lot 306 grading would kind of go straight through there in a flat sort of condition, you know, a little bit 1% to 2% grading away from those backs of the lots. And then these are the trees to be planted in the easement as a part of a different development plan for the PG&E easement itself. And so PG&E has seen our plans, they have seen our grading plans, they've seen our improvement plans, they've seen our utility plans, they've seen this trail and landscape plan through their easement. We're through the approval process with PG&E and CPUC for any work and any grading utilities improvements within the easement. So we're through that process, and we have that approval from PG&E. And then I'll hand it over to Bianca.
Thanks, Kelly. Hi, good evening. I'm Bianca Koenig with BEK Collective. Just came over the hill from Cayucus. Excited to be here tonight, and also grateful to be working on this project. I have the opportunity to work on these projects from the big-scale, big-picture, bird's-eye view, and then down to meeting with the homeowners on their backyard. So I know what these communities, what these developments mean to the people who use them. And this is kind of a preview of what a conceptual design for PA 21. Should we gain your approval tonight for the removal of the oak tree, then we can start to consider what the possible mitigation and design treatments could look like. Once Kelly does the hard work of managing the dirt and utilities and infrastructure as a landscape architect, we get to come in and look at a layer of things, including the mitigation requirements, working with Lindy's team, the environmental sensitivity, ecological benefits as we're working with plants, as well as user comfort and access along these open spaces, and also what everyone else, every client asks me, can you make it look good, too? And we also worked closely with the DRE and to make sure that what we propose would be consistent with what the HOA dues could sustain long-term and be maintained. This is an HOA-maintained open space. And in this area is where we would include mitigation trees as well as mitigation that was already planned for Oak Tree Number 8, and then additional mitigation should we receive approval for its removal. So I have a series of views to walk through. I understand there's a request to say, to understand, what does this look like? What are the impacts to the views of the removal of this tree? So we have some conceptual renderings from four different points of view looking towards Tree 28. This is from the future residential lots looking towards the PG&E easement, and that's Tree 28. And this is a conceptual rendering of what that relationship to the open space would look like should the tree be removed and the grading would go from being a steep slope 10 to 13 plus feet high before the fence, or having that more transparency to the open Looking from Hanson Road and from the north side of Hanson Road towards Tree 28, you can see there's a little bit of 2:1 slope near the tree, and then in the future proposed condition, we would have the road cutting through, sidewalk, and then this open space would be planted and irrigated with new mitigation trees and companion plantings. Further south along Hanson, looking towards Tree 28, this is where you can see the tree currently skylining above the ridge line. And then the new condition, where we bring the grade down, we would have new trees, and these are our best estimate of what the trees could look like at 10 years of growth. However, long-term, they would be much bigger than that over time. And view from the Highlands Road up the PG&E easement, you can see where the grading has occurred per the plans near the tree, and it's kind of isolated on this knoll. By removing the tree and regrading, then we have an opportunity to mitigate the site, to improve the plantings. This is a picture of at approximately 10 years of growth, and even further down the line, you could see even more growth in the trees. So for Tree 28, I understand the mitigation for removal would require a replacement of 10 new oak trees in addition to other mitigation trees in the area. So the goal is to make an oak woodland community. Instead of having one isolated oak tree on a hill that we can't plant under, we could make a whole system and provide access through multi-use pathways and landscaping. And we acknowledge that the tree is part of the identity of this city. I mean, just coming to this meeting on the sign of the image of the isolated oak tree on a hill based on the agricultural history, now we have an opportunity to provide access to this open space and have people immersed in this natural experience. We also have an opportunity to make an oak woodland community, not just an isolated oak tree on a hill, but more ecological and environmental benefits by including additional oak trees. We have the next generation of oak trees, not these oak trees that have been here, but we can support a continued presence and identity for passerobals. Just some big-picture look at some of the things we discussed tonight, being able to utilize dirt on-site versus off-site to increase the transparency and access between the rear yards and the open space. And we thank you for your time, and I understand there's been a lot of information, a lot of big decisions, and we appreciate your consideration for approval of removal of Oak Tree 28.
Very good. Thank you.
We have one more, sorry.
One more.
All right. In closing, I wanted to emphasize that this request is not about convenience, it's about responsible development and public safety as well as well-being. We take pride in the stewardship of this land and our record to preserve it throughout the Olson Project. Where trees can be saved, we will take every step to save them. Where they cannot, we have also taken every step to ensure that the removal is done with purpose, documentation, and long-term mitigation in place. Oak Tree 20 is no longer viable in a long-term setting in its current state and location, so leaving it where it is is only creating hazard for the future and halting the project as well. So we are asking the City Council to alternatively approve removal of Oak Tree 28 pending a grading impact analysis and evaluation consistency with the specific plan instead of amendment. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your continued collaboration and your thoughtful consideration to our project.
Very good. Thank you.
Any questions? Please let us know.
Any questions of the staff? Okay, let's go ahead and start with Councilman Bausch.
So thank you very much for the presentation, very detailed. I'm curious to know applicant's thought process as to why not go through the specific plan amendment first, and why ask for the tree removal now? It seems to me better served doing it the proper way, so I'm just curious what you hope to gain by doing it this way.
Thank you. So with our understanding, this whole time that we've been getting documentations together, our studies together to make sure that this oak tree was actually in a place to be removed, we've met with staff multiple times, and no time was it ever told to us that this was going to be an amendment to the specific plan. We feel that everything that we are doing is within the specific plan, and it wasn't brought to our attention until three days ago that this was going to need an amendment. We respectfully disagree and felt that we provided enough information tonight that shows that we don't need an amendment to the specific plan. We are within our guidelines, and we are willing to also not do any further grading without showing consistency in an approved grading plan as well. Tonight, we are just in hopes that the oak tree removal is the only thing that would get decided on and further analysis be done.
Thank you.
Clear. Any questions? Chris? No?
I have lots, but go ahead.
Okay. Fred? Steve? Yeah, I know. I just want to get any more questions from council before we go to public. Okay, let's go ahead and open up the public comment. Anyone wishing to address this item, please come forward. See none? Anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll bring it back then to council for discussion. More questions?
Darren, could you come up for the mic for us? So I think the oak tree is pretty well doomed, so that's not my concern. My concern is the process. And is there a way to help? Or according to what I just heard, we may not need an amendment to the specific plan, but we at least need to see the grading first or something? Tell us how you'd prefer to see this.
Yeah, so the technical grading plans, the information showing the proposed grading has not been provided. So there hasn't been plans from the civil engineer to show, here's the grading that we are going to be applying for, for a grading permit. The grading is going to go into that Planning Area 21. They've indicated that there is already a grading in 21, entitled grading with the tract. You can see from the photos they've shown, there's grading been around that tree. That grading has occurred. The arborist reports were done after that grading, initial grading, has occurred. So that's, the grading that was entitled has taken place. Plans were submitted, they were approved, the grading's taken place. The tree is there, there's protection measures for it. All of that is established in the specific plan and the approved grading plans. The additional 44,000, 45,000 cubic yards that is needed going out into that Planning Area 21 is not consistent with what's shown on the specific plan. So after seeing the plans, after submitting and going through the engineering department's reviews, it may be that the grading may be looked at by the city as a good project to do. What we're saying is that we need to amend the specific plan to lay the groundwork, to give the city the ability to approve it to be consistent with the specific plan. If you wanted to not approve the tree, have the, direct the applicant to submit the necessary information to the city to try to explain why they think it's consistent, I mean, that's an exercise that hasn't been done. There's been an application for a tree removal, not the engineering, civil engineering plans for the grading exercise. They've shown what areas and conceptually what they want to do, but we can go through an exercise, we can spend a lot of staff time, a lot of time on the applicant's behalf of providing all these plans, but when we look at the image on the left that shows that area not being graded, we understand that there's been some grading approved, we agree that that grading's happened, but the additional footprint of, I think they said 60,000 square foot footprint, 45,000 cubic yards, has not been reviewed and approved, and is not consistent with just the general guides of the specific plan saying that there isn't going to be grading in this area.
Mr. Gregory, I think that the consultant for the developer indicated that they believe this would be minor and that could fall within the language within the specific plan. I think what staff is saying is, we don't think we've got enough information to say that, and based upon what we've heard so far, we're not sure we agree.
Right. Well, I'll just make a couple of comments, and then everybody else can chip in. So it looks like the future grading, I think, was an improvement, just from what I'm seeing, but we don't have any information about the grading. So my only question is, what's the best price? So my only question is, what's the best process so that we don't hold them up too long in the process if that's the best way to go, as far as we determine as a staff and as a council?
We're reviewing plans for vigneto development daily, multiple plans daily. Staff is working hard, and the applicant's team is working hard for construction of another, you know, a big project. This is another component where the applicant would need to submit and provide the information, go through public hearings, to go to the Planning Commission, go to the City Council to amend the specific plan. So that groundwork needs to happen in order for the city to be able to be in a position to issue grading permits.
So what I think staff is saying is... Oh, I'm sorry, Darren. I thought you were done. Go ahead.
It's possible that the plan's showing all this grading, or maybe it is just a small amount in the scheme of the whole specific plan. But this is a hill that is viewed from offsite, it's viewed from, they showed the different views that the hill would then be removed. As part of the specific plan amendment, I think it's important that the Planning Commission and City Council, and going through a public hearing, neighbors, understand that this portion of this hill or this area is going away, and then be able to decide that, yeah, this is pretty minor, or, oh, this is significant, let's find another way.
So I think staff's perspective is that their recommendation is the denial and then go through this process, because we believe that gives the process the chance to work its way out, and we end up where we end up. But I think that's what staff's recommendation is for tonight.
So, I'll go ahead.
Are you done?
You go ahead.
Well, I had some questions, Darren. How old is this blue oak? Anybody have an idea? I mean, how many years? I mean, some of these oaks don't last over 100, 150 years. I'm just curious, this is a four-and-a-half-foot diameter caliper, pretty old, I would imagine, and it is a split trunk. So kind of testimony saying that basically it's not going to last forever, obviously, but, you know, to me, what struck me is on the current status of the soils calculation, there was a heading there of proposed models. In other words, when they submitted this specific plan, it was using calculations based on certain square footage of homes. Looks like to me, maybe the developer has changed his mind and needs more soil now to do what he wants to do with the amount of models. Is that something you guys have spoken to? Or, again, I saw that line there, I was just curious if they've changed the product that they're building in here.
That's not anything that we've paid attention to. I mean, we've looked at the different neighborhoods, the tentative maps, the site planning, the architecture, to make sure that the housing types are consistent with the specific plan. So all of that's occurred, but in terms of how that relates to the reduction, it's 115,000 cubic yards of dirt that they're short. I mean, that seems like, that alone is a, you know, wasn't anticipated with the specific plan.
Right, right. Somebody, I think, kind of made a mistake there for calculations, possibly. But, okay. Chris Bausch, you had a question?
I do. Sorry. The views, I appreciate the different views from the different angles, but what I didn't see in the artist's conception or the Photoshop views, I didn't see any homes in there that I think would also significantly impact the views. So I think that is incumbent upon Planning Commission to look at getting neighbor comment on what that would look like with the homes that would be built. I think the hills, right now, they look beautiful without any homes there, you can see the hills, it's a great view. I agree with that, but that's not going to be the view that happens after the homes are built. I tend to agree with Mr. Gregory that, you know, the jury's still out on the viability of the tree. I'm not so much concerned at this point about the tree as I am about the process. And I have to agree with staff that the process should be followed. I don't know that I would deny the tree removal tonight. I think perhaps a better consideration might be to table this request and direct staff to go back and review amending the specific plan with the applicant, whatever that process is, I don't pretend to know. But I think that's the best way forward, and bring it back as soon as possible so that the applicant can proceed with their plans. Thank you.
Okay. Fred, any comments?
This is a comment, and it's based on personal experience. And regardless of what our laws say and what our current rules are, based on personal experience, I would oppose even our plan for this thing, much less the applicant's plan. I spent 10 years of my life living within 100 feet of those same wires, out on Pennman Spinning's Road. They went right across my driveway, and I know how it affected my radio and my phone every time I went under them. And we were living so close to them that I'm convinced that they were the cause, initial cause of some of my most serious medical problems and my wife's. But that's personal opinion. I can't prove that. What I do know is as a planner and development planner, I have built approximately four projects on almost identical terrain. And if done correctly, you can preserve that terrain and protect it from its current state of possible or potential erosion. But that's if you do it properly. The reason I would oppose even our current proposal is there are four units that are immediately adjacent to that easement, in close proximity to those wires. With the applicant's proposal, that number increases by even more than 500%. And that is many people that we're putting in that kind of condition, having to listen to that buzz almost constantly and living with it. It is not a good place to live, period. And if done properly, you can avoid all of that and still have a reasonable density and put together a good project that people will buy, even if they're unaware of potential danger if they went to one of those units right by those wires. I cannot support this. I definitely support the staff's position on this, to deny the application.
Chris, Bill?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I agree also that this is more of a process issue than about the tree. And, you know, when we see, like, a tree on its island, not the best situation. So I think we, I don't know what we do in terms of whether we table it, but I can't get past this fundamental conflict we have about whether there's a conflict with the specific plan or not, and I think that all needs to get resolved.
Pro Tim Gregory, go ahead.
So I have a suggestion for everybody. I think we should move to continue the removal of the oak tree process as one motion, and then direct staff from there on what to do. How's that? Does that sound okay? Elizabeth?
Sure. Do you want to...
Go ahead.
There we go. Do you want to continue it to a date certain, give them 60 days to work things out and bring it back for an update? Or, I don't know what's a reasonable timeframe, so I would defer to staff.
I haven't heard what their, what their...
One more time?
What Mr. Gregory, what is it that we're going to do with the applicants? I haven't heard the motion.
We were just going to continue the entire item for some period of time so that you could meet with staff and maybe work through some of the issues on the grading to have a better idea of where things stood.
Move towards the information to amend the specific plan that you're asking for, while we wait for that to happen.
Is that the applicant's job, not staff's job?
Correct. Would that work for your situation?
Well, the options are pretty rare.
To delay the motion on the tree, and direct staff to go out to the applicant to amend the specific plan for the grading, so he could really see what it's going to look like. And you could talk to...
And I'll defer to Warren, but there wouldn't be a reason to come back anytime soon to the council, because there's a process for the specific plan amendment.
Why don't you lay that out for us? That's important to me, too. What's the process for them to amend their specific plan, to be able to remove this soil, and therefore the tree? What is the process that we have to have them do?
They're going to provide the plans and identify the sections of the specific plan that need to change, that heat map, the different areas. It's not a whole lot within the specific plan that would change, but it would change the exhibits to show the grading, and go through that process of getting to the Planning Commission, getting to the City Council with the necessary plans to show you, show the public, what the end result's going to be.
Right.
So it's going to take some, getting some information together, but it's submitting application and plans and going through that.
Mr. Gregory, from staff's perspective, I think the cleanness approach would be to deny it, but invite the applicant to reapply after they've completed the grading and whatever else, specific plan, whatever process staff needs them to go through so that they can bring back to you a complete package, right? The specific plan amendment.
Including the tree removal.
Which is our option one, that's been printed in our agenda.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm going to have the applicant come up in a second. Come on up, if you like. But to this point where they can repropose basically the amendment to the specific plan, let me ask the applicant, are you okay with bringing that forward to staff? Need to get to the microphone, please.
Sorry. So our thing tonight is for the oak tree removal. I understand that there is a lot with the consistency, wanting to show with, consisting with the grading, but no grading would actually happen tonight or after tonight, because, like you guys said, we don't have an approved grading set. So none of the grading is happening tonight, we are only seeking the approval of the removal of the oak tree. We are all willing to show and do our work and due diligence to show the consistency with the specific plan and our grading that we have proposed. At that time, when it's under review, our grading, like we do everything when it's under review, and at that time they see it's not consistent with the specific plan, they won't approve our permit, and we won't be able to grade at that time. So holding this up only for the grading when we're here for the oak tree removal, I would ask that the staff would go to a third option of approving the oak tree removal, again, with then understanding the consistency with our future grading be with the specific plan.
Oh, okay, I understand.
So instead of making a defer, like, we are going to make an amendment to the specific plan, we don't know yet, because we haven't had the chance to provide that we are still consistent. But having us amend the plan is going to put us eight to nine to 12 months out, it's going to halt our project. We need to keep things moving forward, so having us first remove the oak tree and giving us a chance to show you with our grading that we are going to submit, that it is consistent, they are going to review it at that time and then be able to approve or deny it at that time.
Okay.
And we cannot do grading without it, so...
Thank you. I'll give it back to the council. I think the first question then is, are we willing to let this heritage oak tree go away without an approved grading plan? Show hands.
Mr. Mayor? I think that it can proceed with everything, including the specific plan, if we approve the staff recommendation tonight on this item, on the tree. That should have nothing to do with the plan. It's a question of the tree. Is it worth saving, or do we kill that tree? And for that reason, I would be happy to move that we approve Resolution 25XXXA, denying removal of Tree Number 28.
As approved or as written in our agenda. Okay, so we have a motion by Strong, discussion? Do we have a second?
I have a question.
Okay.
So what are you moving, Fred? What are you moving?
Staff recommendation.
I believe he's moving staff recommendation, which is to deny the oak tree permit at this time, and then direct them to go back and work with staff to figure out the specific plan, grading plan, and then re-present the package.
So we're denying the removal of the tree?
Yes, that's what it is.
Right there. Recommendations. See, the proof is usually denying, right? That's the recommendation.
I can't support that.
Okay. All seconded for in discussion and/or moving forward. So we have motion by Strong, second by Hammond, to adopt or go ahead and approve resolution as proposed, which denies at this time the removal of the tree. And we're given direction to them to bring back further grading plans to show how that could be approved. Darren, would that work for you?
Option A is specifically requires the applicant's to go through a specific plan amendment.
Exactly.
So, may I make a comment?
You bet. Discussion.
So the developer doesn't want to risk all that work to find out they're going to get denied on the tree. Who would spend all that money to do it? You're talking...
Yeah, but they could also remove a tree without moving any dirt, too.
Not according to this?
No. Yeah, I think you're reading it wrong there, Steve.
Really?
I don't have a problem personally, I'll just say this, that the tree is to the point where I would rather see a new development, start over scratch with new oak trees and new parkway, and it was beautiful what you had designed. But I want to see exactly, you know, if it can be done with your grading plan, which is what staff needs to review and approve. So I have no problem with getting to this oak tree removal after we approve the grading plan, and staff recommends to us that it can work.
After you approve a specific plan amendment?
Amendment, right, right, exactly. And we're trying to talk about, you know, timeframe, that's why we're saying six to eight months. I don't know how that fits into the schedule, but again, this is something that was pre-approved as planned before, and now you're asking for a change. So to me, we need to go through the process with the public to make sure this is going to work. So we have a second on the motion. Any further discussion from council? Okay, we'll call for the question. Chris, go ahead.
So the whole purpose of removing the tree is to gain access to 45,000 yards of dirt for infill. If they remove the tree and the dirt is never moved, defeats the purpose of removing the tree, and that is inconsistent with city policy. So I think it's a chicken and egg situation, but I would really like to see the process followed. I would favor tabling this to help speed this along, but if the path to getting to the specific plan amendment is to deny this, then I guess that is the compromise.
I don't see how it's going to speed things up if we, you know, vote on what the staff is asking us to do. I think it opens up the door for them to proceed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Fred, go ahead.
One other aspect of this that I think isn't being discussed is that every arborist has recommended that it be denied. Every single arborist concerned with the tree. This is a matter of the tree, it's not a matter of the project.
I think the applicants are...
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and call for the question, Melissa.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Bausch?
Aye.
Councilmember Beal?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. We want to make sure that you guys get a good project for us, so, thank you. Do we do a five-minute break? Okay, we'll do that. Okay, we'll do that. So here's the Olson project out here on the edge of town. The 13th Street signals are basically at the river and the freeway. There's three different signals. Those are currently under construction today. The second improvement was Niblick South River Turn Lane, so this is down next to the Walmart Center and the Albertson Center on Niblick Road. That requires a large retaining wall. We can't start that until after the rainy season, so we need more time for that. And then the third improvement would be the signal on Scott Street and Creston Road, which is right here. That will start once the sewer line that serves the project is completed in that location. So that's coming along very quickly. There was also requirements to improve Royal Oak Park, build the Turtle Creek Linear Park, and then build a pool and a farm stand amenity within the project. Those are all the green stars. All those projects are completed. Turtle Creek Park still needs to be accepted by the city council, but all the improvements are done in the field.
A quick question before you get to the next slide. I thought we had a project also at Creston Road and Niblick.
We do. That has a different timing. That's 500th unit.
Okay.
So it's not covered by the operating memo, because it's still within the parameters of the original EIR assumptions.
Got it, okay.
Okay. So here's what the request is tonight, is additional time for the signals. Those signal, and these timelines are based on the actual contractor estimates, or his... These numbers or these timelines are provided by the contractor that's doing the work for these three projects. So we have a high level of confidence versus in the past, we were kind of estimating. So the 13th Street signal projects, like I said, are under construction right now. Those will be done on December 1st of 2025. The Scott Street signal would be done March 1st of 2026. And then the Niblick Road, South River Road improvements would be done August 1st of 2026. Like I said, these timelines have been provided by the contractor. Contractor has a high level of confidence in these timelines. So the reason we need this, it's a variety of things that have converged. We have supply chain issues with ordering different parts and equipment for this. There were some design changes that had to be approved and changed at the last minute that extended some of the timelines as well. These all have to be bid out, because these are CFD-funded and reimbursed projects, so they have to go through a bidding process. They've had trouble getting responsive contractors, so that didn't help. And then these are very complex projects with retaining walls, signal lights, moving mast arms, new poles, signal timing, just a lot of items. So, you know, it's been a lot of effort on both the developer and city staff to get this together, and that's why we need basically, you know, another 10 months or so to finish all these projects. So the recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute Amendment 2 to the Olson South Chandler Specific Plan Development Agreement Operating Memo Number 1. So all the attachments are included in the resolution that we need to take final action on this. That'll conclude staff's report. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Warren. Questions, Warren? I don't know if we need to have an applicant. Yes, if you like.
Well, actually, we tried to pull this item from tonight. We want to pull it, this item, from discussion tonight.
Okay, you're asking us not to take action on this?
Correct, yes.
What's the reason?
The developer asked to pull this tonight. We have to relook at things now that our other project also got denied, so we need to relook at and evaluate our project. So we need to pull this for tonight and reevaluate.
Okay. Staff? Is there a problem with that? I mean, because we've agendized it?
Stay on the original timeline?
Warren, can you tell us whether or not they're currently in compliance with... Operating Memo 1 is currently amended?
So the... They're out of compliance. October 1st was the deadline to have these offsites done. If we approve it tonight, we'll be back into compliance. If we don't take action tonight, then we clearly will be out of compliance come November.
So just so that I'm clear, what the developer is asking is for us to not act on this and leave you in default under the terms of your existing agreement with the city?
Uh, yeah, that's a big one. Um, that, yes.
The council could act on this, and then you could make a supplemental request in the future based upon previous actions. But if we fail to act on this, you will be out of compliance with your agreements with the city.
Okay. Uh, yeah, well, okay, I'm going to leave it then on, because we'll, I'll deal with it with the developer. Okay, we'll just leave it on.
Do you, I guess, is there a question? Do you need to change some of your dates certain that we were going to agree to? In other words, can you not make some of these now after the agreement that's been talked over with staff?
Right. We wanted to reevaluate some dates now that other things are going to get pushed back and our project's going to be on hold. So we need to reevaluate the dates. We didn't necessarily want to cancel it completely and not get an extension, but more of an evaluation of the dates to make sure that everything is still in alignment and the project can still move forward.
Okay, so we could actually, we've opened the item and we could continue it? If somebody wants to make a motion possibly to give you more time to work out maybe a date certain in the next meeting to have you work with staff?
Yeah, an immediate extension to the next meeting would be nice, so we can discuss it with the...
Warren, would that be okay? What do you think?
I'm going to echo the city attorney. I mean, at that point, I believe we'd be out of
I mean, at that point, I believe we'd be out of compliance, and so that becomes a concern for, I would hope, the applicant and the city, the developer and the city. These are, if I'm not mistaken, SEQA mitigation requirements, Warren?
Correct.
So, you know, while they're not at the trigger just yet, we would want to maintain the compliance measures in such a way that both the city and the developer are pushing forward to have a clear understanding of when those mitigation measures are gonna occur. If there's another request to delay, then, you know, we've shown a history here where we worked with the developer to do that. This is news for us as of, you know, this moment. And so my recommendation to the council would be to approve as is. And then we can continue to work with the developer as we have been.
Right.
So, Chris, just to clarify, because in our last meeting, you did say that there was gonna be no more changes to this amendment going forward. So now we can make changes to this if...
The intent, and again, my recommendation stands at this point. My recommendation stands to move this forward, and then if we need to, we can continue to work with them.
Amendment three, if we had to, at that point?
Yes, thank you.
That's kind of what I was thinking. So we're gonna have to keep you in compliance. Okay, so the applicant has spoken. Let me open it up to the public real quick. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Adrian Peters. I'm the vice president of land acquisitions for Kaovnanian Homes, and we're building our Marabella Project in Planning Earths Four and Five of Vinado. As a party to the development agreement, we highly concur with the city manager's recommendation that you guys move forward with the staff recommendation to approve this so that we do remain in compliance with the development agreement and all the other project obligations. And if there's additional conversations that need to occur with the master developer about timelines, priorities, and deadlines, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, that it may be a third operating memo might be in order. But for tonight, I cannot go back home and tell my supervisors that we're running the risk of being out of compliance because I would be unemployed tomorrow and have to come to you asking for a job. So I concur with the city manager's recommendation. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online, Melissa?
No, sir.
Okay. Bring it back to council for discussion and/or action.
Mayor Hammond, I move we approve Resolution 25XX.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Fred Strong, discussion?
Well, I had to add a comment, because of course, that's my area. And I'm assuming that with all the other construction going on, the project over by Meadowlark is gonna be very lightly impacted. But one thing that isn't in here that I wish was in is that if that stoplight goes into Scott Street, we can remove the stop sign, which is a block away, which doesn't make any sense anymore.
Well, we'll let staff talk about that. But the stop sign you're talking about at further north on the intersection there where they go into the park?
No, it's on Creston Road, the stop sign on Creston Road, one block before this, on the other side of the park.
And I won't probably do it justice...
Which actually was put in originally to make it easier for a councilman that preceded us by 20 years to get in and out of his house.
And I'm sorry for jumping over you, Councilmember Strong. I was gonna suggest, and I won't do it justice, that we can independently look at the stop sign issue, separate from the traffic signal issue, but your request is noted, and we can look at that.
Get Leslie to look at that, for sure. Okay, so we have a motion by Gregory, second by Bausch, to approve the motion as proposed. Any discussion, further discussion? All right, we'll call for the question then, Melissa.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bausch?
Aye.
Councilmember Beal?
Aye.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Mayor Hammond?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously?
Okay. All right, so let's get you guys back together so we can work this out, get it done. All right, that takes care of our agenda pretty much. We have now, moving on to city manager report, Mr. Hua.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items for you this evening. The first, earlier this morning, the county board of supervisors met, and on a vote of three to two, they chose to move the ambulance service RFP process forward. This would take the RFP document and move it to the state, where the state would then review it, and then ultimately come back to the county, and then the county would issue that RFP. As you recall, several meetings ago, this council voted unanimously to authorize staff to participate in the future RFP process, when and if that occurs. And now we have more clarity that we do believe that it would occur. The timeline is still be determined, but I would anticipate that we would not see an RFP from the county until sometime well into 2026 at the soonest. Beyond that, we did want to note that we issued a news release earlier this week announcing that we have begun road repairs in the Crestline Fairview neighborhood funded by Measure I-24. This is going to, of course, completely redo the pavement on certain street segments. The pavement operations component of that project probably won't start until the end of November, and then we anticipate project completion in January of next year. There's a lot of work that has to be done before the pavement can happen, but know that that's moving forward. And then, as you know, we've been working on parking lots in the downtown area to improve those, and the railroad lot is well under construction. And we're going to be moving into construction on the Marv's Lot here soon, I believe, within the next week or so. And that's going to include new pavement, new improved drainage, new lighting for aesthetics and safety. And we'll be working with and have been working with the business owners in the Main Street Association and provide ample notification. Did want to make a note, and we'll continue to communicate with those stakeholders that alternative free public parking is available at the Spring Lot, excuse me, on Spring Street, between 12th and 13th, as well as the train station. There's ample parking at both those locations while we make these improvements. And then, speaking of the train station, if you've been down there lately, we continue to make improvements to this gateway in accordance with your economic development strategic plan. He's not here this evening, but most recently, Paul Sloan, along with facility staff, helped coordinate the installation of several new signs down there to help people find their way both to the trains and when they get off the train to our local businesses and downtown area. The next thing that's coming down there in the not-too-distant future, we hope, is a new restroom. As you recall, we've reclosed that restroom several, probably a year or so now ago due to some issues we were having down there, and there's some new concepts and ideas we'll be bringing forward to hopefully have a new restroom there in the foreseeable future. So a lot of happening out in the community. Wanted to just give you an update on those few things. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chris. Next, we have council business and committed reports. Let me start on my right, Mr. Bausch, and then we can come back this way and finish with...
Thanks. Very quickly, October 9th, we agreed a potential concept plans for library renewal. It looks very exciting. I can't talk about it because it hasn't been approved yet, but I'm really excited to see that move forward. October 17th, provided input for an upcoming council visioning session, a great conversation with Jacob Green and Associates. That was very enjoyable. October 20th, senior citizen advisory heard an excellent presentation regarding Slow County's master plan on the aging strategic plan from Robert Diaz, program manager, and then also yesterday, Parks and Recreation meeting. That's my report.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Strong?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to ask the council if they'd be willing to bring back Hope's Village of Slow for consideration, despite the actions of the audience regarding their proposal. I think the proposal itself is worth the consideration, if that's agreeable to this council. And we could also bring back removing that stop sign.
Yeah, work with Leslie. She's good at looking at those kind of things, so.
And then, for the meetings I've attended, I apologize to everybody, including the audience, that I'm almost deaf tonight because of the last three weeks, I've been over the grapevine six times, and my ears are still somewhere up there at 4,000 feet, fortunately. But I'm hoping to get that corrected next week. However, we had multiple meetings of SlowCog that I should talk about. One was their priorities for our projects have changed, and their priority is, number one, that the most important one is the bridge over at Vine Street. But they tend to give us the money to build a bridge from a grant they're going after, and they're hoping that, or money they've got set aside, actually, and they're hoping that we will take the money that we have set aside for that bridge and move it over to the crossing over Highway 46 on Union Road, because that one has dropped down on their list to number four of the projects. So they prefer to see the right turn lane off of Highway 101 onto Highway 46 be a higher priority than Union Road. That's their opinion, because we haven't gotten enough approvals yet in their opinion. So they think we're delayed on that one. And I have to say that we can't give them a start time for when everything's gonna happen up at the airport, because we're still waiting on federal government. So in all honesty, I represent the entire region where I'm sitting there, even though I'm appointed by his group. But, so I had to agree with him, that it made sense for how their money is available. The other thing is that it was reported that the governor has signed the sales tax legislation so that if their sales tax measure passes, it will not affect the cities at all. So it exempts the cities from any consider, any impact from that particular sales tax measure being taken to the public. All right? Because they're gonna be going after it, probably. It's out to study. MoSAN, which is the Pacific Surfliner Railroad, I had meeting there, and unfortunately, the state denied, first of all, we are gonna have equipment in January of 2026 for an additional trip from San Diego all the way up to San Luis Obispo and back on the Pacific Surfliner. However, Caltrans, Division of Railroad, denied the operating money. Said, no, we're not gonna approve your operating that train. So we are now looking for a legislative solution. So we have to talk to our state senator and assemblywoman to see if they will support legislation that would restore that money to us. So that's very important. And finally, I represented the city at the League of California Cities Conference, annual conference, and there were no resolutions, so I never had to vote on anything. However, I did attend many sessions on the legal decisions that are affecting, have affected the city this last year. It was very informative and hopefully will help keep us from making mistakes that we could make, even if our city attorney doesn't speak up and tell us, no, you can't do that. All right?
That's her joke.
But that's about it, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Gregory?
Well, first, I'd like to thank staff for our temporary quarters over here, but I would like a scoreboard over here to see what's going on next door. So if you could arrange that, I'd appreciate it, so.
Maybe another screen, yeah, right there.
I like being in a place I know, though. Gymnasium's great, so. I attended the senior barbecue where they gave away so many prizes and gifts from the community. It was great. So the entire audience there, I don't know how many gifts they received, but Fred didn't get one, but everybody else did. I attended the senior advisory committee today with Councilman Bausch, and then the county presented the senior...
Aging Master Plan.
Aging Plan for the county. Yeah. What is it?
Master Plan.
Master Plan for Aging. And it's a pretty bleak thing, because there's a lot of need and there's no money. That's my opinion on that. But we'll continue to work with them. I was able to attend the Pioneer Day on a tractor, and I got heckled by a fellow city councilwoman by a microphone. But it didn't bother me, I just smiled. Then I waved it free down the way through. But I just want to say thank you to our community for Pioneer Day. It is the committee, the tractor committee, all the volunteers, and everything the city does, Frida with all of her equipment, and our police department, fire, everybody. It's just a great, great event and something we should all be proud of. And I don't know how Mayor Hammond did it, but he actually got out of the parade and waved at me when I drove by, and I said, you're in the parade, how could you be doing this? But he does have rank on location, so. That's it for me, thank you.
Ms. Beal?
Yes, Pioneer Day was a lot of fun. I helped announce with Mr. Joel Peterson, and if I do say so myself, we were pretty funny. It was really a great time, and thank you, everyone, for helping to make it happen. So I also attended CalCities down in Long Beach, and of course, I attended a lot of great sessions. One of the things I was struck with were my one-on-one conversations with people from different parts of the state in different capacities. I just want to remind people, we need to be really proud of what we have going on here. We do not have, I heard some of the challenges that these other jurisdictions have, and we don't have that. I really came home feeling very, very grateful for the staff, for the leadership, for the programs, everything going on in this jurisdiction, so we need to remember that. One of the sessions I attended, it was childcare as essential infrastructure, and I thought it was a very interesting way to frame it. We don't always think of cities and our place with childcare, and I know we're all a generation away from having kids at home where we needed childcare, but it's really a super, it's a huge issue for our working families. The childcare costs as much as, really, the housing costs for these families. And if you think about it, it's very different than when we were raising our kids. And if you think about it, you know, that costs local businesses because there's problems in turnover and absenteeism with the cost to our businesses. It ends up influencing taking people out of the workplace, so that, you know, costs our productivity. Just a lot of, it also affects kind of our desirability as a community, as a place to be raising kids, if we are being thoughtful about how we're addressing working families and their kids. And one of the things they talked about was, they said, you know, childcare belongs in city planning, because, you know, we have this identified in our economic development strategic plan. And people ask me, they're like, well, what does that mean? What does that mean? Childcare is important. I'm like, I don't know. I'm not sure where the city fits in to this. I don't know how to answer that question. But they answered it. They really talked about community development, planning, zoning, parking, accommodations, like these are the ways that we can be being proactive and thoughtful about keeping childcare front of mind as we're moving forward with different projects. So I just wanted to share that with you. Last thing is, they said, you know, some people need bridges and roads to go to work. Some people need childcare. So I will leave it with that. Join me for Pizza with Chris on Monday at 4:30 at Pizza Express up in Uptown, 33 something or another Spring Street. It'll be great. I look forward to talking to my uptown neighbors, so thank you for letting me be of service.
All right, thank you, Chris. For me, I started off, this last session was at the League of Cities, Representative Passo in Long Beach, of course. Eight sessions, I think, I attended, and everything from the general session to development agreements. I think Chris, Hua, and I were both on that one. Very interesting, good education on what goes into these very things that we talked about last night, or tonight, about the development agreement, the agreement between the city and the developer and what, who's doing what. Very important, get it right. Also attended this morning, the Board of Supervisors meeting, where the consent item 14 was a very long, lengthy item. We were all there, Chris and I and Jonathan, Stornetta, along with... were all there, Chris and I and Jonathan Stornetta, along with, I think, every other fire chief in the county, many firefighters, city managers, everybody spoke in approval of moving this forward to get this RFP out so we can actually further discuss maybe a different model for ambulance service in our county after so many, 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 many years. So that, we'll see what that's gonna happen in the next few months. Tomorrow, we have PRAGA, Pass Rubbles Area Water Authority, meeting here in this room at 10 o'clock in the morning. And I think that's all I had on my last two weeks. That's at 10 o'clock again tomorrow morning here. Upcoming events, we have the Pass Rubbles de la Montos Festival this Saturday, October 25th, at 10 a.m. to 7 p.m. in the city park. Development Review Committee is gonna be meeting October 27th in this room. Again, most all of our city meetings are gonna be pretty much in this room, aren't they, Melissa? I mean, both planning commission-
All of planning commissions-
Yeah.
And council. I believe youth commission and library board of trustees are meeting in this room now as well.
Very good. Okay.
And DRC.
All right. Then we have the Pass Rubbles Planning Commission, again, October 28th. Warren, that's your group, gonna be here in this room at 6:30. The Halloween Downtown Trick or Treat, October 31st, gonna be Friday from 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock in the downtown area. All the merchants are gonna be out there with, helping the kids celebrate Halloween. Development Review Committee is gonna be November 3rd, 3:30 in this room, Nora's room. And the next council meeting for us is gonna be the Pass Rubbles City meeting at 6 o'clock, November 4th. That's two weeks out, I believe.
Mayor, I'm sorry to chime in and backtrack a little bit. Staff wanted to get some clarification on the request for the Hope's Village item. Is that affirmative that the council wants that to return? And if so, would that, would that be under presentations, given I think the request was for the group just to be able to provide a presentation? Is that, just want to make sure that we're getting clear direction. Is that the direction of the council?
Is that the dissent, pretty much? Did you hear him okay? I'm, I'm having a little trouble with his remote.
You're talking about the public hearing?
I'm sorry, the, the Hope's Village presentation.
Right.
Councilmember Strong asked that that return. I, I just wanted to make sure that we got confirmation that a majority of you wanted that back. I wanted to get direction. And it, and, and if you did want it back, we would, you know-
What I asked them to do is get with staff. If there's an agenda, I mean, you were on a, bring forward for any of our discussion items.
And, and just real quickly, I didn't mention it earlier, I do have a scheduled meeting with them. They did reach out to staff, and I am meeting with them. I don't know if it's on the books just yet, but it's in the works. So I-
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on that, too, Chris.
Stop sign. Like that, not that?
Work on the stop sign.
So on the tiny houses, I, I think it really needs to start with a meeting with staff and see what they have to really offer. I have a very severe concern on funding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, location, 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 obviously, is gonna be a big one and, and funding, obviously. But that's why I want them to get with you folks to-
Okay.
See if they can be develop an item for us to discuss.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Direction.
Okay. So that brings us then to the very end. We have adjournment. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Gregory, second by Strong, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Good job.